Welcome everyone, we'll call the meeting in order. We'll start with a prayer followed by the budget of regents and we'll call.
That's great. Well, I just thank you for today. I thank you for the men and women. I pray that you continue to give them wisdom and guidance. And Lord, I pray that you would just use Hicksville as an example for the rest of the state of Ohio. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Baker?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Richway?
Present.
Beverly?
Present.
Bassett?
Here.
And Mike Martha Dapson.
Thank you.
Lisa, you may come up to the podium and talk to council if you can figure out a way to get up there.
Well, I'm just saying we could.
We'll just stand here.
The microphone. Microphone that we have for live cable.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Speaker. Hi, Ron. Lisa Speaker. Are you neurotic or not, Ron, too? Hi, there you go. Nice to see you again. Yep. Hi, Larry. Yep. Hi.
Thank you for coming, Lisa.
No problem. I was asked by Diane, someone who's willing to just really orient you on what the Small Business Development Center is. It's like widely known. So, the Small Business Development Center actually covers five counties. Defines is one of them. Henry, Williams, Paulding, and Fulton, and the others. And the office is located at Northwest State. I primarily work on rural businesses, relationships with economic development directors, as well as I have a lot of close relationships with banks. Anyone in need of services that wants to open a business. Now, I'm gonna leave some brochures with you, but this is about educating, to open a business wisely. So, I would say primarily what I do is business plan writing. Business plans should be feasibility analysis, should be market research, finding out if, you know, a business is going to work before you encounter. So, primarily what I do. I will help with market research. I help with business plan templates. I have financial templates. So, there's really a myriad of services that I do offer. But it is a lot of one-on-one counseling and probably in Hicksville. My biggest company that I have directly helped, and I know he wouldn't mind me saying, is Two Bandits. Brutal. So, they took this office for, you know, a lot of assistance writing that plan and trying to get financing. The whole purpose of the Small Business Development Center is to get you successfully presenting your business to a bank, or your plan, and trying to get you started on the right foot. So, it's a big risk. You know, money doesn't come free to banks. So, it's something that you need to do, or someone helping them throughout the process and having that free resource. So, it is a paid office by the state of Ohio. There's small business development centers all across the state, so the state does try to help, you know, get businesses up from the bottom. Or feed from my services. Okay? So, I'm paid by the state for that. I also teach full-time in Northwest State Community College, so I teach marketing and entrepreneurship courses. Very well aligns with obviously what I'm doing at the Small Business Development Center. And I have a business plan, so I started that up 18 years ago, still running it today. So, I've written my own business plan, so I'm pretty uniquely qualified to, I feel like, other people get off on the right foot. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
I just want you to come, Lisa, because we have, we're live now. Our council meetings show during the week it gives people an opportunity in the community that watch council news, and it's also on YouTube, to learn if your assistance is out there and available to them if they happen to hear about.
Yep. I don't know if you have maybe a community center where you could place some information. So, I brought some books. I'm gonna help a lot of times with legal structure. So, I have books that will help you do a self-partnership, partnership, corporation, LLC, you know, what steps you need, you know, how to register that business, but I can help with that as well. You know, I wouldn't, sorry to run a substitute for a lawyer, sometimes who's gonna charge you hundreds of dollars to, you know, do this. I can help you with that.
I am meeting with the Community Service Center Director tomorrow morning.
Okay.
If you could give those to her.
Sure. Yeah. But, you know, I think it is not widely known. You know, I just got a lot of traffic out of school, kind of tucked in. But, you know, I get a lot of traffic, as much as you can expect in the rural counties that I cover.
Wow.
Yeah. It's not every day, you know, everyone's wanting to open a business, but hopefully successfully and wisely. So...
Okay.
Because about small business, I believe in it. I obviously have one of my own, but it's very important because that's what makes an economy such as Hicksville, such as Defines, such as No Bribes. Right. And that's why people want to come here, you know? Think of where we'd be if there weren't small businesses. Yeah, there wouldn't be much around, so, yeah. Everyone adds something to the community. In the business aisle? Yeah. So, miniature golf, standing cages, go-karts, and laser night.
My wife and grandchildren. Frequent your place.
Yeah, good. And we're gonna add, you know, it's in the growth plan, so.
Good deal.
Don't know what and don't know when, but it's part of the plan.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
And please, yeah, just keep these on.
Okay, we will go on to the regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? We'll call. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Do you have the approved bills list? So, you have put them both together. Are there any questions?
I got one. Bill's at the day of the park for the dumpster and the porta-johns. Did it reverse?
$676 to light that sign up. Huh? That was half the bill.
Half?
When I was giving the bill... Said there's probably gonna be some discussion on that. Just in the head, I can't remember. They said they remembered that we were gonna split that bill 50/50.
Hmm. I thought we were just making a donation and we were done.
Twice.
Just giving them a certain amount of money. Was it?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we give that full amount to them?
Yes.
I don't think it was quite that much.
That's what I'm hearing. There's much left to be included in the initial amount. Is this under that amount total?
Not quite. Still, it's a little bit over. Not anything humongous. Less than 100. I mean, it's just odd.
But, that's what I wanted.
However, that you should be aware that we have to pay for the electricity, pay for the electricity lights on the sign.
Uh huh.
And it's a dollar a day.
There had been a profile of like $500, $500. Where's that money at?
That GoFundMe account, I believe, is what you're referring to. I mean, it's...
They cut Darren a check for $613. So, they still got money in that account.
That money was supposed to go towards additional signs in the future, was their plan.
It is somewhere. I think, I'm trying to think of the name of the account that they keep.
Copy of the check and it had their...
It's Taylor-Cliffer. It's a bunch of letters.
Yeah.
It was boiled down to Darren. Darren needs paid, so I don't know if you wanna pay him and work out with the other people. Cause I couldn't remember.
No, it wasn't $50. We gave a certain, we offered a certain dollar.
$3500.
And I think we should stick to $3500.
It was because he came back and asked for, and he said no.
And that's when he started the GoFundMe?
No. Yeah, GoFundMe at a time.
Oh, really?
They said they raised as much they would go have, it's like $3500.
So, with this bill included, we've overpaid the $30,000 plus some of the dollars.
Yeah, that's not much.
And it's on a cap, they got, is that much more coming, right?
Yeah, they've already paid Darren.
They paid their half, and I have a copy of the check.
Any other questions on the bills?
Yeah, I have another question on the bill. Well, if it's less than $100...
Other option would be to pay the difference between whatever it goes out to $3500.
I would go along with that. Just paying him $35.
Someone would need to, I guess, make that part of their motion. So, we'll go on, and are there any other questions?
EJ Prescott for almost $30,000 worth of meters.
A bunch of radio reads and related stuff.
We had all the radio. Almost done, but not even close. Not even close. Wow. And on the Ohio First Responder Grants for $5500.
Three separate grants, one for vehicle, one for new breathing air compressor, and one for air pack.
This is that company that's priced the grant, so it's paying off.
Would you have any grant yet?
No. Just getting everything ready to sign up.
Is that matching funds or what?
About 5%. Grab right at 5%. Vehicle or whatever we get. So, it'd be 10% is all we got. So, $10,000 vehicle will pay $30,000.
Are there any other questions? Would anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Are you paying the bills or are you putting that clause in?
This is what he said. He didn't put any clause in.
Refraser.
Okay.
Put the clause up to $3500.
Beverly?
Yes. What Larry just said.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Me. Your cemetery report. Okay, we met, Cemetery met on July 12th, and say that Cheryl Miller is going to retire for applications to interview. We also had, this is gonna be confusing, Kent will have to get in on this. We also had sidewalk work done out there, and as, he was gonna do it last year, Mike had sent him a letter. Come back first this year, have a bill for $2,400. And as he was doing it, Kent went to the city. We thought it belonged to...
Not to that while he was doing it.
Oh, that's what it was called.
Well, he found out that's the reason. We're doing anything.
So, I have the bill here. Let me begin and discuss on whose bill it is, whether it's the cemetery's or... In front of the cemetery. And they said...
The angel or whatever.
It's on the old side. But they said that when Janice Myers was mayor, she...
That got put in about two...
Oh, yeah.
Something up the middle.
What kind of cemetery? So, this bill's kind of up in the air on where it's gonna go.
He replaced 70 feet of it or he put in additional?
No, he replaced it.
Yeah, it's a curve, right?
Yeah.
Your road. Not sure. I didn't know anything about this till last Wednesday.
I don't even remember looking bad, being honest.
Well, you got a letter from Mike, so it's not bad.
Yeah, but I mean, was it the whole 70-foot or was it section?
Oh. And we also got some bids on, we're gonna develop a question I, we're gonna put in a false setup. And that will be completed, it's supposed to be completed on August 14th. Hope for love if you would like to join.
That strictly be just hard surface area?
Stone.
Stone.
If we have a concrete, then we're gonna be...
Did you guys advertise for this position that's open for the...
No, that's what he just asked me. I'm sure we did.
Paper.
But...
I thought I...
I remember seeing.
Thought in there, too. How late do people get to apply? I mean, what's the deadline for...
Cut-off was, I don't even remember, it was last...
Okay. So, you have two interested persons?
What do they think about that sidewalk, you know? Just so they know. You think it's the cemeteries? They think it's on? Yeah, I'm 99% sure Floyd put it in, balanced it. I was on the street department at the time, but I remember it was...
So, we did it one time, lost the turn?
I would say.
That's right. That's where I'll get it, too, Larry.
So, now we know whose bill that is.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
The cemetery?
People should, in the sidewalk committee, should consider taking that off at least the basketball. Clearview. Clearview Drive, yes.
Yes. That would be nice. I agree with you. It would be nice to have a bridge across the creek and...
You could probably just add a section of culvert and, or whatever, but you wouldn't need the bridge. But that needs done. It's an addition.
Anything else? Any questions for Sheila about cemetery? I guess we'll go on to council committee reports. Are there any committees of... Anything?
I think I'm... Eric's... We got a email from the mayor regarding a light. There is only one light on that entire...
Is that right?
No, there's another one. I thought spacing wise, it seemed pretty uniform. There's one.
Down the street.
I think there's three of them.
There's one at Smith and Columbus.
Cause there's one.
High and...
Yeah, Bonnet High that sits across the street, and then there's none until you get down to Smith, you're, well, you're... From Smith intersection. The other one's down in front of the school.
I didn't, I didn't look at that personally.
We haven't had one there for 70 years.
Yeah. I'm just telling you where I saw it.
To look at it and give the person a yes or no. That's all I want you to do. I guess, to give the resident a yes or no.
So, is it a yes or a no?
Well, I would ask that the committee discuss it and make a recommendation, bring to the entire council. They want to check that out themselves, so you may be ready to put your two cents worth in if it... Your committee can decide that, too. You can, whatever you want to.
Don't say that.
If Cat okayed.
Remember you paid...
There's a lobby.
More lights doesn't mean less crime.
Yeah.
I guess so, yeah.
Light lobby. Okay. Any other committees of council have anything to report? Get that me for. Okay, we'll go on to the administrative.
Say it, Cheryl.
Committees have to be listed on my calendar. Personnel committee meeting for several items, and I also need finances signed on my list. Whenever you can.
I know, I was waiting. I couldn't read a mine.
Whenever you can. I'm here every day. I don't have no air, but I'm always here. Give me back there where there's air.
Meeting dawns on.
So, get your meetings, Cheryl, please.
You wanted that with who?
Finance, and I also need personnel.
Mary and Sheila, can we speak directly after the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Take care, but you watch, Cheryl.
First one I'll read, just get news out to the public somewhere, then the rest will just... As far as CSX is... Past 31st and 29th of this month. So, basically from Maine to Elm's gonna be closed, all traffic. Got their detour in mind, they don't have it posted yet. Cars... I can't recommend it to go around the block either way. I did let all the homeowners and renters into that stretch know what's going on. I've talked to the post office. Worldos is aware of it. School will be starting, all this is closed. And they do have a couple of signs up on... I did have one person ask, why is the village doing this? It's not the village, it's CSX. If I had my choice, I wouldn't be doing it. I just paved that road. I can't wait for that to happen. But, anyhow, it'll work out supposedly 60 days, but I probably figure more than that. Thank you for our cameras for allowing me. Of course, it was 4155. Beating a... I thought we already decided no.
Kind of expensive.
I thought it was expensive.
Can I add something? Set up here?
Camp and see what he says.
That's fine.
Expensive.
Yeah. The well field testing. Unless we get thunderstorms and... One of the two companies is coming one day, the other one's still running behind, so they said they'd bring it down next week. So, I'm hoping to at least get some of that stuff moving. I'll be out of town for a while tomorrow for a meeting. My kitchen is already shot down the drain, so I don't know when I'm taking off. And roasting. Thought we had the AC fixed last week. Get the shell celebrated too soon. I've got a couple companies giving a quote for a roof unit. Said it's gonna be tough to replace because it's been sealed around in rubberized roof so much. And so, I said, also give me a quote for one of those split units, I call them... Council room, I'd stick one in the mayor clerk's office. So, they're quoting for up above and two of those units, so I'll get those really soon. The back's fine, it's the front unit that conked out. And they didn't think the rear, neither company, the rear unit would have enough oomph to do everything.
Probably getting four units and that in place, cheapest thing to do is put a piece of roof.
Yeah, it's always...
Anybody have any questions for camp? Thank you. On to the senators reports.
First thing I have is ordinance 2019-08, first reading by caption only. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances providing for publication of new matter and the updated and revised codified ordinances repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency. This is our yearly thing where we get our code updated.
We'll call. Beverly?
Yep.
Richway?
So, second, third reading of ordinance 2019-08 by caption only. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances. Publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances. Repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
Second.
We'll call.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2019-09, a first reading by caption only. An ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
Questions for that to answer?
Yeah, this is the money that we were appropriating in the law enforcement assistance funding the law enforcement. For when we were trying to... So, that's the need for this because there wasn't money appropriated. The finance committee, or maybe all of council, was sending an email by Cheryl about trying to find the money for that, so that's what this is about.
Training money, not appropriating. Is that safe to say?
It was, but not appropriate, yes.
So, then, 2019-07, first reading by caption only. A resolution authorizing revolving loan fund committee entered to an agreement with Stoic Industries Inc. declaring an emergency.
Time moves, man. Second.
We'll call. Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
That's it.
Second, third reading, resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero seven by caption only, a resolution authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into an agreement with Stow Industries Inc., declaring an emergency.
So, move. Second.
What call? Yes. Ridgeway?
Yes. And then, since I was at the last meeting, I know I'd emailed the mayor and Cheryl, and maybe they may have passed it on, Mr. Haynes accepted our thirty-five thousand dollar offer to him to resolve the issue on his land. I spent, after I got back and got caught up for vacation, the end of last week, working on some documents. I told him I would have those to him this week sometime to review, just like releases and things like that. Once we get that agreed upon, and get the money, I also got the Cheryl act, I forget what it was, but somebody at Mommy Valley sent me the payoff on his-
Sue manager.
Yeah, Sue manager at Mommy Valley on revolving loan, so that I can- Hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll be able to read that. I didn't, he wanted to know what the balance was on it and stuff like that, but we didn't, that wasn't a requirement of anything, but he may choose to, but he could do that at any time, like anyone else. And then, right before I left on vacation, I had sent along that grass ordinance amendment, I know Ron had called me, and Eric had emailed me. Back for the next meeting, the only thing I was aware of is wanting to specify- Being the person that was subject to the penalty as opposed to the ten-year-old lawn boy or whatever. Anybody else? Eric and I had talked about including something about warnings in there, and what I told him, I would prefer, is like all other laws out there, you have to describe it with the police, and they can warn, and they'll keep track of it in their records, and that way, if they go back a second time, they'll know. So, give them a warning. But leaving it open-ended, because if you do come across somebody that's being, for lack of a better term, a jerk, got their grass this hard- Give them a ticket on the first time, you don't have to give them the warning. So, and that's the way, you know, there's nothing says they pull you over for speeding, they gotta write you a ticket, and I think they frequently, especially in places they're concentrating on, give people warnings, so. If anything, I'll try and just make a little amendment to owner, specify owner or occupants to cover tenants.
Okay.
And, I'll bring that back for the next meeting, readings on that.
Does council have a, do you know whether you want to be more occupants? Do you need to know that before you can write it?
I think I would put both of them in there to cover- More tenant, if the tenant's responsible for mowing the yard and they're doing it, they should, they should be responsible. And if it's just, you know, Larry at his personal house, you know, obviously, he should be on the hook for it.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions for Troy? Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. Need to get him in for a little bit.
Yeah.
Hot, just like here.
We will go on to the department reports. Sergeant Doctor, are you here in the chief's place? Do you have anything to report?
Just a couple things. Calls for service, the month of June, five hundred twenty-four calls for service. Had two hundred and sixty cases in the month of June. And then Officer Mater Tyler is leaving us. His last work here will be July nineteenth, he's taken a job at Williams County Sheriff's Office. That's all I got.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Our chief.
The other thing I have is today. With all their class testing, everybody passed, they have national registry test to take yet, certified and ready to run. There's six of them total.
Good, great.
Any questions? They have to set a time up, so I'm not sure. Tests paid for now.
They just do that online?
No, they have to go to Fort Wayne, to a testing center and take it. Yeah, this is a testing center that does it all the time.
Great, glad to hear that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thanks to the police and fire department for coming out. Kids and water, water fight and everything else, kids had a lot of fun, and I seen you guys all out there, so.
Look forward to it every year.
So do they. Numbers keep increasing, too.
Yeah.
How many did they have? Wow. That's a lot.
Yep, kids have a lot of fun for three days.
And the park? Ball games are over? I didn't tell Ron when he was here, but thank him for all of his trips to Fort Wayne to buy supplies for the concession stand. That's work for him. And all your volunteers at the other parks standing out in the hot sun all day directing traffic, and all that was much appreciated. Yep.
Looking park, the tournament that was better- Or in the, in the park, I shouldn't say parking, we were in the grass and everything else, but- And a lot of people were saying, what a sweet looking park we got.
Well, did you have any things for that big weekend with all the ball tournaments?
No, no, I mean, just-
Are you, is the park a park floor, are they considering making additional stone parking?
Like out there where they park?
Yeah. Right, and such phenomenal turnouts down there that, and if things keep progressing, I mean, I was talking to some of the other towns that were there for my grandkids, Diamond Kings or whatever it is, and- I guess going on in Rectorfield for, you know, next year for some of these tournaments that we have, and I thought we got the greatest place in the world for it, if we just had more parking.
Thank you. All right, go on to the fiscal officers' report.
I'm gonna stick the fund status- Hicksville Mayor's Court report is there for the month of June. The letter that we got from Ohio Gas for, it's a notice to public officials having to do with costs associated with- They're in the same boat we are, except I think they want to have a recovery charge that they charge their customers to pay for it.
We should have done that.
We have a- Hicksville Park and Hicksville Village, everything that is not metered, and everything that's not built.
That was interesting.
That's for like half a year.
Did you get a chance to see how the June pool functioned?
But I will circle that, so I remember. And so, those reports is from Dawn and one's from Jesse. Do you have any questions on those sidewalk ordinance? Because there was some discussion about what happens when they get the letter, and then they get the second letter, and nothing happens, and it's like, well, Hicksville fixes it, and we send them a bill. And then if they don't- Not ordinance already.
This is our ordinance? Things are not quite right, is it?
No, that's right.
And instead of the fund status report, you have two reports, one is our original ordinance we passed last year for the budget, and on the side, I put in how much we've spent as of January. It's the first six months of the year, and the percentage that we spent for each department. And then I also have the second one that has the red- Actual cash money we had, and when we started January first, and the final column is how much we had on June thirtieth, and it shows how much we have actually- Actual numbers, that's on June thirtieth.
The date at the top on the right-hand column.
Oh, yeah. On June thirtieth, not December thirty-first.
Any questions for Cheryl? All right. So, Ron Jones was asked about- I guess-
I know a lot of councilmen, they don't have a phone in the phone book anymore, cell phones. Another thing we could- Through the village, instead of giving out your personal information, so maybe that'd be better. I don't have prompt button on my- Website, however, so do you feel? But I don't school, Hicksville schools, and so they can, the public can contact them quite.
So, I guess, number one, you have a problem with your personal phone number. If they call our office and wanna contact you, we give it to residents. I will tell you that, so they can call you with their concerns. Do you have a phone, it'll be posted on the website, your personal cell, anybody? You have a home phone on here? You have a home phone?
They don't have a problem, they come to my door, you know?
So, you want people to come to your-
They have, yes.
And you want an email, your email?
They can, and she has that.
Your email's-
I'm, I'm with Sheila on the phone, 'cause I know how that works, looking for home continuity. Something that doesn't mean nothing.
But if you had a city email account?
Yes.
Who's the computer?
Dawn?
Dawn. She said wouldn't be a problem setting up an account.
Well, there might be a problem. So many-
Gmail's totally-
Yeah, you're right.
But I've had a lot of people-
And be metal link account.
So, I'm the only one that has their phone in the phone book anymore.
I was saying, you can get calls at three o'clock in the morning, but doesn't, I mean, about it.
Talking about having one account or one for each?
Free. Mine, too. Is that something that you can take care of, Cheryl?
That really?
Email me and give me a description of what they wanna talk about.
Run? Run? He won't feel it.
Email I, I email him.
And email. So, it won't be your personal-
Separate from your personal-
That means you'll have two to watch. Is there anything else that anybody needs to, anybody in the audience, if they have anything they wanna talk about to council? Okay.
Yeah, I'll save it, sure.
What call? Jones? Sure.